Again.
Wait, if I can, a second for Todd to do our emergency. Three seconds, I'll have to come back.
Maybe you should.
Should we? All right, here the things.
You can pause.
Okay, that's fine. I should be done, so let's get this. All right, I'd like to call to order the, this special meeting of the Flemington.
Flemington.
Flemington Board, thank you.
Excuse me, Karen, can you pull the microphone closer, please?
Absolutely, sorry, we had a feedback earlier. Can you hear me now? No, I'm not talking to this one, am I?
Not really.
Is that good?
Better.
Better?
Thank you.
That good?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, all right. So, please raise your eagle for the place salute. I'd like to.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you, that's hard. Okay, this meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings act. Both Adam and Alex might notice that this meeting has been provided by way of publication. Actually, Eileen, what date was?
That would be, let me just double check. It was the 24th. October 24th was notice for this special meeting. In the 100 and Democrat.
Yeah, okay, just in the Democrat?
Yes.
Okay, so, Adam got an electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hunterdon County Democrat. On or by October 24th, 2024. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted at the Flemington Municipal Building located at 38 Park Avenue. And any handicapped accessible entrances there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons, if any requesting, copied to the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding, any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant. To what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate for judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being open to the dates and getting us to achieve this special meeting tonight on the board. If we hadn't, it was mine, it's all on me. Because if I hadn't canceled last week's meeting, because we had no agenda items, then we could have used that date. But I pulled the trigger a little soon on that and then we couldn't get that date back. So the only reason for special meetings that I canceled the last meeting and I didn't realize that the subcommittee was ready to present. So then we had to do a special meeting. I'm not embarrassed about this special meeting, it's just because of the last board meeting. So thank you everyone for being open to that and those getting it together. Eileen, thanks for your work on that, I appreciate it. Okay, so as such, we do have a small agenda, it is for one particular item today. But we always start with item one, which is public comments.
I need to do roll call first.
Oh my gosh, you're right, sorry. I missed the roll call, so apologies, let's do roll call, Eileen, before we get.
Mayor Carroll?
Here.
Councilwoman Fisaro?
Here.
Mr. Campion?
Here.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Dashna?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Mr. Semino?
Here.
Ms. Swingle?
Here.
Mr. Echo is excused, Mr. Show?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
And Mr. Clerico and Mr. Troutman are excused.
All right, thank you, great number of people, I appreciate it. Item one on our agenda as always is a time for public comments. As we usually do, this is for public comments for items not on our current agenda. So it's strange, but that's the way it is. So does anybody have any public comments for something that is not on our current agenda? May I ask some questions? As a public comment? Yeah.
We just have the name, name and address, please, for the record?
Oh, sure.
Robin Lucchides, Executive Director of the Flemington Community.
I can't hear that.
Sorry, Robin Lucchides, Executive Director of the Flemington Community Partnership and Flemington Improvement District.
Thank you.
Fifty Stangle Road.
Okay.
So my question is, is there another public comment session about the relevant topic for the special meeting?
Right, so. There wouldn't normally be, and not because we're trying to find anything, because what this, and if I say anything wrong, please jump in and let me know.
Sure.
What this meeting is for is a subcommittee has been working on, on this document. And this is for the subcommittee to present, to present to the wider board. For their comments and what the subcommittee have been doing to generate the document that we will then send to the next stage of that process. And at that point, they have the whole public hearing on this. This is not officially, this is not a public hearing, right, on this issue?
I understand.
We've been asked to do this by council and subcommittee, this board has done it. Some, some of the board have been working depth on it. Sent to the board and this is the time for the board to say, hey, what were you thinking of them, I like that bit, we died on this, can you explain this? And then it can be discussed between us where we feel maybe it's still to go, maybe it's ready to go to be sent to. Normally, we would not have public comment in this situation.
I understand that thing.
Okay, but I guess what I would like to do at this point then is ask the board whether we feel minded to add. And I would, if we did align this, I would suggest it would be best done after we've had our discussions on our thoughts. I will, I disagree, because that's, that's.
Time, so, fine.
Look, I disagree about having comments after the fact, because that would be precedent setting, we've never done that before. And then every time we discuss something, we're going to end up having to open it up to the public for comments.
It's very difficult to hear you guys.
So, you know, so I don't agree about having comments after the fact, and I think that it's premature, I mean. Nobody's seen this except for the planning board, so I don't know what the public's going to come, like they should listen to the discussion. And, you know, and then. We don't even know what this document is going to end up looking like, because the planning board hasn't, you know, had time to talk about it, they just got it like a week ago. So, for, you know, I mean, I don't know what kind of comments there would be now and afterwards, again, it's precedent setting. If we start letting people comment on a work product, because we've never done that. And I, for one, don't want to start entertaining having, you know, that kind of dialogue forever on the planning board. That's, that's me, this is one person's opinion.
Right, can you balance?
Yeah, I was, I'm taking a different, getting this in place, but from a different, from a different perspective. This, it's not a part, point in the process for public comment on, on a proposed. There is, there is, there is not a proposed ordinance that council has introduced on first reading that has come to, come to planning board yet. There will, obviously, if we're talking about an ordinance, there is, there is an opportunity for comment at the council meeting when they're considering the ordinance. And I think that's the appropriate place for that.
This is a draft, a draft, a draft.
But, right, and I, I would, I would just say that, you know, it's not a, it's not a question of not wanting to hear from members of the public. It's a question of where it fits into the process. And the process for public comment on draft ordinance happens at the governing body. Unless it's dealing with things like a change to the comp plan or something like that, where the planning board is the entity that's holding the public hearing. So I, I would, that's my, that's, I'm agreeing with you coming at it from a different perspective, but it's the same idea.
Three reasons, yeah, but, yeah. I mean, I totally agree with, I totally agree with you. I mean, there is a process in place to do it, and it's, this is so drafting, you know, that I, it's. For me, it's like way too premature for the public to comment, it's even, I mean, the council doesn't put into this document other than what I've told them. So, and I don't know, I honestly do not know how it's going to end up. I don't know what's going to happen tonight or over the next course of a couple of weeks, when the subcommittee goes back to address whatever said tonight, so.
With, with all due respect, my comment then is that we, we've been asked unofficially and our businesses are talking and our landlords are talking about zoning changes. In general, and how that impacts us and what are market realities, what are we facing every day? So as the representative of the businesses, I was encouraged to have an opinion on. This and all kinds of other matters related to zoning and the match between the market, our landlords. What we need to do to get to where we want to go, so that's why I'm here tonight. I'm really happy to listen to this conversation and I'm sure it'll be a good generative conversation. We just want to, wherever it is appropriate to make a comment, make a comment.
I might, I might, I suggest last year when we did the subcommittee, we invited you in on one of the ordinance and specifically to talk about the ASG district. So it would be, I think there's an opportunity when the subcommittee gets back together again.
Absolutely.
To have you come and join us to talk about whatever.
So I'm here respectfully to say that we want to be engaged and we want to engage in a conversation, so that, that's it. And I, I'm glad we're, I'm glad that I was made aware of the special meeting and that we're here and we want to, we want to have a dialogue.
And I love it, and Mr. Dashna said, we, we, we want to welcome comments, but we, we have a process that we have to go through. And there's, not say there isn't, there won't be, we've explained, there will be time for that to happen. And, and I think you listening to the discussion is very helpful too, because you can see how the, what, what comes up and how this process goes. And what all the board members feel about this topic.
Thank you.
Beth can explain, she will, apart her, she will explain why we're doing this and how and what process we're going through. And there is, within the process, as we've explained, ample time for comments and for people to be involved, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, with that being, do we have any other comments, I don't see any online, I mean, I don't see any hands raised. Anybody else in the public have a public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we move on to mayor comments first.
Yeah, I just want to do a very brief parking committee update. That the parking committee had, through the council, and the council asked the parking committee to take this on. To review and look at the speeding and traffic controls and safety features that could be placed on Main Street. As we're working through everything else, adjusting traffic light timing and parking issues and getting surveys of our municipal parking lot and talking about reconfiguring that. All this other stuff, Jay has been asked to take a look at Main Street because of, it is reporting the police department, the highest rates of speeding in town. None from Flemington, by the way, everybody that pulled over is not from our town, not a surprise here. But we have multiple, a lot of complaints about near misses. And we are looking at multiple locations for potential three-way stops. As well as, I can never remember what these things are called, but the crosswalks where you press a button and the light flashes like crazy to let somebody know that somebody's crossing. We're looking at those as well in a couple of locations. So we are trying to make Main Street a much safer environment. You know, all this costs money, so, you know, we're looking at the 2025 budget to, I think, to my place. That cost pain versus four-way stops that are just the cost of this, I'm sorry, so, that's it.
And we, I just, just a question, because I was trying to think of how many three-way stopstop do we have? Like, how many non?
Oh, a lot.
There's still, like, as you drive around, I keep thinking.
It's a lot, it's a lot, I mean, we've had requests from Broad Street, for example. People are requesting now after the success of the four-way at Williams and Broad, people are requesting that Bluefield and Broad remains with three-way. We haven't gotten there yet, but, you know, on, on Main Street, for example, we could create a three-way copper line at. Which is lame, not Walter's Lane, that, those are Walter's Lane.
No, no.
What about Dewey?
What did that way say, Max, we're looking at that one, I hope we can get to St. Max's. We're looking at Stangle Road as a, as a potential three-way. And, and Park Avenue, that's where the near misses are, in Stangle.
I know that, I mean, just as an aside, I know that the council was working on the parking studies, some of my neighbors have, who were on the school route. And we're not a four-way stop, so I know that some neighbors were asking, you know, how do we get a four-way stop, I'm sure they've come to you.
Well, no, they haven't, but we have, we have requested that in New Jersey Avenue and Elwood, about making that into a three-way. But it's like, you know, I was.
How many can, yeah.
A former council, council president of Flemington has long to complain before, remember Mary Melfi said. When I was council president, I made the entire town 25 mile per hour speed, she's like, you're going to end up making this entire town a three-way stop. I'm trying not to, but.
It's, it doesn't make a difference.
Arguing about it, people actually are requesting these.
Yeah.
For safety reasons, so, you know, and we do have high rate speeding. And the police have been tracking it, that little light with the speed limit thing is actually tracking the speeding. And, you know, in, in order of speeding, it's mine, then from the road they've done so far, it's mine. And then park. And surprisingly, where people were complaining about a high rate of speeding on Broad and Banelle. Because of the traffic calming on Banelle Street, the fact that they have two-side parking. The four-way stop where there's, you know, where people don't park as much on both sides of the road. Has really slowed down the traffic, because when you go further down and there's parking on both sides, it naturally comes down. And it's not a surprise that mine and park only have parking on one side of the road, so it feels like it's larger and people.
Yeah, and, and they're looking at everything, I don't need to make the request, I mean, just being on the. Being, well, it's being on the school route, it's, we only see that type of traffic from seven to seven oh.
And there was a pretty bad accident.
There, there is always a, in my corner, yes, because they, they almost two people, and I mean, they're kids, they're trying to get to school at seven oh eight, so.
No, the issue is not the seven oh eight, the issue is the seven twenty-eight when they're late.
Yes, yes.
I will, I'll mention that in the next part, we are, we are open-minded to look at all this, but we're taking the ones that are the most.
I mean, and again, I think there's, there's pros and cons, right, because other folks have said, but if you make that stop, we will back all the way up to Broad Street. Because there are that many cars in the morning stopping and going, but I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is, I'm glad we have professionals looking at it.
Yeah, we definitely relying on Jay to look at all of this, he's doing a, I mean, a really great job and, and kind of going above what we asked him to do originally. Well, one of the other things is the, you know, the North Main traffic light, I should bring that up. So we started out with the North Main traffic light requesting that possibly there be a left turn only from Ferran Boulevard onto Main Street. And, you know, Jay and my campion who's online right now ordered a very high price tag to do that. It's not just buying an extra light that's got a left turn arrow, there's a lot of engineering involved. It's a whole new mechanism that has to be installed. And I, and there was, Mike, you can interrupt me, but my recollection was it was somewhere between a hundred and $200,000, way out of budget. To put in that left turn light, so Jay started adjusting the timing to allow more cars to get through. Hoping that that would alleviate the situation. And he said at the time, when school reopens, this was in the summers, when school reopens, I'll be able to tell the timing's right. So now he wants to adjust it again, and he wants to get it back to the original timing, because it worked when it was first erected. But the original timing diagram has been lost to the borough. But it was done by our former traffic consultant, Judd Rochell. So Jay was going to reach out to Judd, who apparently still answers his phone, even though he's retired, to see if Judd has a copy of those original timings somewhere in his files. So they don't have to be redone, because to redo those timings.
A lot of work.
Well, it's a lot of money, a lot of work equals a lot of money. So absolutely, we're hoping that he's going to, that Judd can find them for us and we can get the timing right. And, and see if that works before we invest the money in the next, the next very expensive step, which is the left turn. We all acknowledge that that lane is a problem.
With the traffic coming through.
If you're on, if you're on, if you're on Ferran Boulevard and you want to make a left turn to Main Street. All that traffic coming across Park has right of way, and it's impossible to get more than one or two cars through, that's it.
It's, and it backs up a lot.
A lot, a lot, especially during rush hour, so in lunchtime.
It'll be interesting to see what Jay can.
So it's better right now, after he adjusted some of the timing, and he did it by hand and by his, his knowledge and his craft. But it's still, as he acknowledged it, after school opened, it's still not right, better, but not right.
So, well, hopefully we can get that information that sounds great. I've heard a lot of the anecdotal evidence of, that some, it's nice, and it'd be good to get that resolved.
Yes.
All right, that.
That's it.
No, let's move on to council comments for Adrian, please, another thing then.
Karen, my comment, I'm on the same committee, I sit with Marsha on that, and my comments are right in alignment with that, so nothing additional, thank you.
Okay, thank you. HPC comments.
We had a meeting on the 16th of October, there were no applications. But I did want to mention that the HPC was sponsoring a free historic walk-in tour, which is this Saturday. The tickets went in less than 24 hours, so definitely a big interest. It was, it was advertised on Eventbrite as well, and it's free, so it sounds like they're going to have really good weather too, so. Great, great effort, Chris Pikel is going to be the one that's giving the tour.
It was wonderful.
Yeah. That's it.
Professional reports, Beth's been a professional with us, right, oh, I'm calling online, sorry, do we have any reports other than what we're going to work on today? No. No, okay, great. All right, item six approval of minutes from October 8, 2024 meeting, those were distributed by Eileen. Does anybody have any comments or queries on them or any additions or revisions they want to make? Changes? No, Eileen, they look to be perfect, so. Eileen, can, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
We had a lot of people absent from that meeting, so maybe Eileen should say who can vote.
All right, good idea.
Eileen, you're muted?
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the, the motion in.
The motion?
Well, before we do the motion.
Who can vote?
Who can vote? Because there were a lot of people absent at the last meeting.
On the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, I couldn't hear the, the question. Yeah, if you look at the, if anybody has the minutes in front of them, the present, the people that are listed as present have the ability to vote and can make a motion in second.
Are they extended, can you read?
Well, the, the people that were excused were myself, Mr. Dashna, Mr. Cook, Weitzman, Pikel and Schulte.
Echo and Schulte, so those people cannot vote. So I just. I'll make the motion.
Fisaro, second.
All right, so anybody that I do call will have to abstain if they were not present at the last meeting. Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisaro?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Mr. Dashna?
Stane.
Mr. Cook?
Abstained.
Ms. Weitzman?
Abstained.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right, let's move on to the main reason for being here tonight, which is item seven, the ordinance discussion. So this is for amending the zoning ordinance for the DB and DB two districts as. So I'm going to ask Ms. McManus to give us an overview of why we did this, what we did, what was the viewing point, where it's coming from, to lead into our discussion.
All right, I'd be, I'd be happy to, to lead folks through this. So just big picture, there are two ordinances before the, for the board for discussion. The first is an amendment to the DB, the Downtown Business District. The second is an amendment to the DB two, the Downtown Business District, or Downtown Business two District. The one of the committee was, I guess restarted as a result of concerns about inactive uses in the downtown. And, and, and also understanding that that was one of the issues addressed in our master plan. And so the planning board created the subcommittee of a handful of folks here in, on Zoom to go through the permitted uses for these two districts. And the charge was to address the permitted uses of the district. There are some minor, I would say smaller recommendations in the master plan and perhaps other things that, that might address bulk standards and other, other aspects of the zones. But the intention here was to really deal with the most important issue, which is what are the permitted uses in, in the district now? And how should they be revised? And so the ordinances really do two things, I would say first, they eliminate all of your SIC codes. And so as part of that, regardless of what the, of what the final permitted uses are, I say, I would say that this is a modernace, modernization of your land use ordinance. That I think is becoming more and more necessary every day for, for a couple of reasons. But I'm really pleased to see that for these two districts, we've, we've eliminated that, and it's, and that's a continuing trend. We did that for the TC district, and I would recommend that we do that for any other district in the borough, although they really apply to just your non-residential zones. And so the other thing it does is for both ordinances, but for, in different ways. It eliminates those uses that are, that the subcommittee found were not beneficial to the downtown. And it also creates a, a bit more, I don't know, categories, if you will, in the sense that we have permitted uses throughout the district. Permitted uses on floors that are not the first floor, and then we have permitted conditional uses as well. And, and all of those have been addressed in here. The package that was sent to the board includes an overview memo, of course, the ordinances that are subject to discussion. As well as a land use map, trying to give a sense as to where specific business types are in these two districts. And then I also included the existing zones, just for some information. And I will say also included in the memo, in addition to just providing an overview of what the ordinances do. I also provided a handful of definitions that I thought would be helpful to folks, so you don't have to go hunt through the land use code to try to. So unless there are any introductory questions, I thought I would just start and go through the DB, the DB one district.
Does anybody have any questions on what Beth said already, just to, because I want to make sure if I was understanding them before we move forward? Okay, good, yeah.
Okay, so let's start with the DB one district, this is of course the, the borough district that predominantly encompasses Main Street. And so it's really the downtown area. And so what this ordinance does is it first updates the purpose of the district, I think to provide a bit more description. And presumably assistance to the board as you consider applications in this own district. And so the amendments are intended to reflect the desire for an active mixed-use area that is inviting part of your downtown walkable, et cetera. Something that can really be of service to your residents as well as service of destination for folks outside the borough. And then after that, it goes through the permitted uses, I think as is pretty obvious, the first, or I guess the second page of the DB district is, is predominantly just deleting all of those existing uses. And then on the third page of the DB district, that's where we begin, the 16 new permitted uses. Now, while every single use here is new, it's newly listed, it's, it's new text, if you will, and you can tell that by virtue of it being bold and underlined. I will say that a lot of these uses that are now listed are not actually new to the district, they've just been recategorized. So instead of, for example. Instead of, for example, florists of SIC code 5992, we're now permitting retail sales. Retail sales encompasses floors, so just because you don't see the term florist. Retail sales encompasses floors. So just because you don't see the term florist listed as a permitted use does not mean it's not permitted. It's just under the, the umbrella term of retail sales. And there are, um, a variety of examples in there. Another example is, uh, Stan Studios. That's SIC code seven ninety-one. But one of the newly permitted uses is artisan studios. That specifically includes Stan Studios as well. So, uh, many of the uses that are permitted today in the DB district continue to be permitted. I think some of the, uh, more noteworthy changes are the distinction about where certain uses are located. So for example, the permitted uses include, uh, retail sales throughout the entire district and that means. On every floor that the, that the building has. And so if it doesn't have something about the floor location, that means it's permitted everywhere on property, everywhere within the building. If we go to the second use, retail services, uh, that specifically is retail services on floors, not including the first floor. So that means that retail services, which include things like, uh, like maybe a barber shop, uh. A shipping shop, a shipping place, or a photography studio, uh, someplace where you're going to receive a service right then and there. As opposed to, um, as opposed to say, uh, a real estate office where your service is to, to purchase a house elsewhere. But, uh, in, in, in building service essentially is retail service and that is now, uh, permitted only on the upper stories or perhaps a basement. If that's applicable to the building. Uh, those upper story and basement, but I think in reality largely upper story uses. Those other uses include health and fitness facilities, higher education and training, learning centers. Uh, apartments, although that's not a change, uh, that was, uh, that's an existing standard. Also, uh, offices and medical offices are now permitted on the upper stories as well. Um, and in tra, and, and the other permitted uses include things such as those art studios I mentioned. Uh, I'm sorry, I think I failed to mention artisan manufacturing is also an upper story use. Uh, other permitted uses include artists and studios, breweries, indoor recreation, theaters, um. And municipal uses, municipal use I, I include in every zone district. And then there are a couple other uses that I think are worth noting and that is, uh, funeral homes and single-family homes. Both of, a single-family detached specifically, both of which are permitted if they exist today. So if you have a funeral home today, if you have a single-family detached home today, that will continue to be permitted. Um, and then of course we have a combination of all permitted uses is, uh, is permitted. That too is not a change from the existing ordinance. Um, and in terms of changes to permitted uses, especially, and I'm thinking, uh, most notably about those uses. That, uh, that exist today that will not be permitted. I wanna be very clear that even though the zoning ordinance may change and it might state that the use is no longer permitted. That does not mean that any particular business must exit the building, that they must relocate their business to another location. There's a, a grandfathering provision, if you will, essentially that allows for existing uses to remain. If that existing use is going to be, uh, reoccupied by the same use, that is also permitted. But if it's going to change from, let's say, um, uh, a lawyer's office to, uh, to a barber shop, that would not be permitted. Because tho, both of those would be upper story uses by virtue of this ordinance. So there is, uh, some protection built in for those existing uses through the municipal land use law.
But that, they, are, are, you want questions as you go?
Let me just get through the accessory and permitted, because they won't take as long as the, or accessory initial. For the accessory uses, uh, there's one change, which is I added language that I think is very typical and, and that is simply any. Accessory use, which is customary and incidental to the principal permitted use. I think that's very helpful. It just means that quite frankly, just because it's not listed as the accessory. Permitted accessory uses in the district does not mean it is not permitted. And this also takes pressure off of all of us to make sure that we list every single potential accessory user structure that could be appropriate. Uh, and then the last section for the DB one district are, uh, conditional uses. And, uh, many of those uses, those uses that I indicated have been, um. Uh, have been moved to the upper stories or not the first floor as a permitted use. There is a conditional use that would allow them to locate on the first floor. However, uh, the conditional use essentially requires that it not be located on Main Street. That's the, that's the, the bottom line for this language is it, uh, it allows for them to have an entrance on Main Street to get to the upper stories. Or otherwise they need to be located on one of the side streets such as, such as mine or perhaps William Street where the DB district actually. Uh, may have a couple of properties down the side street, or there might be a property large enough that there's a portion. Of the building that is entirely oriented to that side street. And then the, the last conditional use is, uh, to allow single-family homes, uh, in certain areas. Essentially north of Cavern Street and south of William Street. Uh, and that is, that was done, uh, to sort of recognize, uh. The single-family buildings and single-family uses that will be, that are located in those areas. So that's my, my, uh, my overview of the DB district and I'm happy to take any questions.
Before we just go to the touch question, could you just speak to why we're doing this? Cause I feel like it's a truthful thing. I, I feel like it's, yeah, full question, counsel. But also it's something that's been in our master plan. Can you speak to that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the, so the master plan now for many years has been talking about the need to. Uh, better, to have a better activated Main Street. So a Main Street that is full of. Uh, what I often refer to, and I think what this memo refers to as active uses. So uses that, that are from, uh, from a literal perspective are having folks walking in and out of the building throughout the day. As opposed to, uh, if you think about one of the uses that has been relegated to the upper stories or perhaps the side streets as a conditional use. Uh, office space where folks are generally speaking, going in to start the day, perhaps leaving for lunch and then. Uh, coming and going for lunch and then leaving at the end of the day, as opposed to a, a store or a restaurant where folks are coming and going. Uh, throughout the open hours of the shop. And so, uh, one of the things that the master plan has done is talked about the active uses, has expressed concern about office in particular. Which is, which is, uh, I would say generally inactive use and it does not contribute towards the. Uh, the concept of Wilmington's Main Street being a destination for, for visitors to come and shop and dine. Uh, or for the ability of residents to shop and dine in the downtown.
So just from a question perspective, and then we can do comments later. Uh, from a, a grandfathering perspective, if you eliminated, if we've eliminated SIC codes. So, um, your example of. Let's just say a law office to a.
To a barber shop.
To a barber shop. However, a law office to any other kind of office, cause office is its own category right now. And an office is an office is an office regardless of what it's used for other than medical. Any office is an office and any. Indoor recreation is indoor recreation, but because you have those definitions. So gone, so yes, you couldn't go from. A lawyer's office to a barber shop, but you could go from a lawyer's office to any other office environment.
I am gonna, Kara, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna attack you for that, cause I think that she's gonna be able to give you a more robust answer.
Yes, no problem. Um, so it really is going to come down to. How the use was permitted under the ordinance. So since we were so specific originally. If the permitted use was lawyer's office specifically. And that type of use is no longer permitted, let's say on the first floor. But another lawyer wanted to come in and to continue to use it as a lawyer's office and not increase the intensity or the size. Then pursuant to the pre-existing non-conforming statute and case law, they would be allowed to do that. If, and, and I'm gonna look and Beth, maybe you can kind of, well, I'm looking at it right now. If we take a look at what was deleted. We have specific, let's see where we have offices. Do we have a general office? Yeah, so it would say, for instance, offices for finance, insurance and real estate services. Okay, I'm looking at number twenty-two. So if there was a real estate office on the first floor and it, that wanted to be changed to. Something that's not permitted here, um, or, or legal services even, okay? Even though that was permitted under the prior ordinance. It has to be the exact same use in the exact same intensity, once it's no longer permitted. So we can't flip-flop here. So even if the use was allowed before, under one of the other SIC codes. I would. I would say that we'd have to look at it, of course, on a case-by-case basis, but the use would have to continue in the exact same fashion. As it had been prior to the change in the ordinance. I guess that's the best way to describe it. So we can't kind of pick and choose. So let me make a different example.
No, so, so that does put a, a burden on our zoning officer, cause he would have to know when the existing business was put in. And when it left and what's coming in. Cause another, let me give you the example. I, I, I read it a completely different way, so I'm glad I had that question. Um, so I opened up, uh, uh, I'm an attorney. I'm, uh, uh, I opened up an attorney's office, uh, to, uh, after this ordinance is, is passed theoretically. And so I opened up, uh, January first. It's an office on January first. Any other office, it could be a political office. It could be a, uh, an office for a contractor. It could be any other office other than medical could spelled out, because new ordinance says office is an office is an office. However, if I opened up an attorney's office today and then a, um, uh, sign maker wanted to come in and have an office there. I can't because it's going from legal to sign maker. Time to think of things that are irrelevant.
Yeah, um, I, I, I don't know if I agree with that characterization. So let me say it back to you and make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So you're saying, right now, if it's a legal office. And then wanted to be changed to another office under the new ordinance. It would be allowed to do that. And I would say it would then be subject to the floor restrictions at that point. If, if there are any associated with that type of use, okay? So if all of a sudden the use that was previously permitted is no longer permitted. It can't be changed to one of the other permitted uses. So let me, let me take a different example. It might be a little bit easier. Then, go ahead.
But, but a law office would be a legacy? So a law office could stay as a law office, could stay as a law office, no matter who the lawyer is?
I, that I absolutely agree with. In its location, in its current location, as long as it stays a law office. It could not go and be changed to one of the other, yeah.
So the practice could be sold, or the lawyer could retire and another lawyer could go into that space.
Yep.
Or a partner could take over any of those, but the legacy is that it was a law office.
Correct. It could not, once the new ordinance was adopted, be changed, Todd, to your question, to a real estate office.
However, once the ordinance is changed. If you open up a law office after the ordinance was changed, it is no longer a law office. It is just an office, office use.
But you would be restricted to the upper stories.
Correct.
If you didn't ask for your.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yes, yes. No, you're right. Now, I understand your question now and yes, we have now taken. The restrictive SIC codes and broaden them to say office. So it wouldn't matter what type, but.
Is this, so, so our zoning officer needs to really maintain an accurate, or the FCP really maintain an accurate thing of when a business went in. Cause if it went in prior to this ordinance, it's governed by SIC codes. If it went in after this ordinance, it's governed by.
Well, the use is set as to before this ordinance goes into effect, whatever it is then, that is the only use that it can be maintained in that.
Correct.
So I, to you, you made a point that it was burdensome for the zoning officer. I actually think that it's actually easier, because it's the, the only thing you can. Ad, admit on, on that lower floor would be something that's exactly the same as it's already at Kara's point.
Correct, correct.
Right? So that's simple. I, are you, are you coming in? Was this a law office? Say maybe we need to make some sort of assessment and write it down what they are right now. As of that day, write down what businesses are in and then that's a simple list for him. We define it as law office. So would, would we have to do that?
So folks, there's, there's a process built into the municipal land use law to deal with this. It's called a certificate of non-conforming use. And so I think within, I wanna say a year.
Yes, one year, Beth.
Zoning change, it is in every office, every use that is just gonna be prohibited as a result. It is highly in their best interest to apply to the zoning officer for the certificate of non-conforming. Certificate of non-conforming use. It does not need to come to this board if it's within a year. So it's great for us. Sorry to Mr. Rinaldi, uh, could be more work, but, um. But it's in their best interest to do that to avoid the question of what was, what was there, when was it approved, et cetera.
So that's formalized, is that what it is?
And do we have a phone book from nineteen seventy-seven?
Right. So you really would, again.
Go back to seventy-seven.
No, but, but, but Mike, and again, nothing sets precedence that the board does and, and each application is different. However, some things that we have heard in the past, because they didn't get a certificate of non-conforming use. So with regardless of the good, bad, or indifferent, the business community would want to get certificates of non-conforming uses immediately.
Yeah.
Following this, because that would protect them.
Yes.
If they wanna sell their business, so on and so.
Somebody that works with the businesses might wanna make that clear to.
Yes.
Uh, to any, anybody that's reasonable.
So, so, right, uh, cause I think that, cause that did not happen with, I, I don't wanna go.
It doesn't typically happen, quite honestly. I don't see that in a lot of towns where, where property owners are rushing to then get certificates of non-conforming use. So it just, it's a really great opportunity for folks, but I, I'm not gonna fault anybody that doesn't do it, cause most folks don't.
So, okay, that, that was.
They wouldn't have to go back years and years. It would be at that date. It's there and then, then they wouldn't have to prove anything.
But if they didn't do that certificate of non-conforming use within a year, uh, then it opens up the category.
Well, then they have to. And they need that in, yes, it's, it's much more of an.
These are just, I, I, I don't wanna debate. These are just clarified questions that I had. So the, uh, not including the first floor, however, we do have some basement. We used to not allow anything to be in a basement. No, no stores, no, no services, but based on the way this ordinance is written, you could use a basement as a retail.
Absolutely. Now, I, I will say that the caveat is that it means that they're gonna have to meet all of the construction code requirements for access, et, et cetera. So the zoning doesn't, uh, doesn't supersede any of that, but if they have a space that's able to be occupied for their proposed use from a construction perspective. That's consistent with the zoning, they'll also be able to do so.
Uh, uh, okay. And then when, when we spoke in the master plan on active businesses. So we're making a subjective, the one thing that caught me for this were services. Cause I think services are more active than retail.
This is, this was my question.
Yeah, so, so we're, we're saying that at, at a, a service, a barber shop, I know, you know, barber shop, uh, hair salon, nail salon. Um, they are the most active uses that a, a municipality can see. I have not seen them. I tried to go through, maybe you could help us with other town. I tried to go through neighboring towns. I couldn't find anybody who had. Services off of the first floor.
Yeah, this, can I, can I add on that?
It's just a question. I didn't want to.
No, this is my, no, this is my, this was my question from, from this is, um. The, a barber shop, if you've got three chairs going on, a barber shop's gonna have twenty customers an hour coming in and out of that door. That's quite honestly far more active than a lot of our retail businesses, unfortunately. Certainly more than a fine restaurant where you, you book out ninety minutes for a table, right? Um, uh, similar for a nail salon, right? Would, would, I think would, would, would fit into that as well. I think, I know, um, things like, um, a, a dry cleaner, right? And it was listed here explicitly, dry cleaner is another place where there is, you know, small front end and a larger behind the counter operation. But again, that's very similar to a takeout restaurant where you've got people coming in and out on a regular basis. And most of the activity is happening in the back and in, when we were working on the land use element, you know, I'm. I'm remembering it as, as Todd is saying, that we were concerned about active use in terms of customers and pedestrian activity. Someone doing their, so it, and, and the way you said it before, I think caused a little bit of a concern. It's not just for the, we want to bring customers from outside of the town. There is also an aspect of the DB and DB two. That is serving, we want to serve daily transactional needs of residents who can choose to do those by walking. Right, to, to, from, from their house to town. And if I can go to the post office and the dry cleaner and get my haircut and stop at a shop. Those are all a series of active uses that I don't think we would wanna discourage that kind of activity in there. So that's. I, I, I wanna, we can maybe have some discussions to where the commit, subcommittee was coming from on. Discussions to where the commit, subcommittee was coming from on. Pulling those out, I understand, like, not wanting a law office on the front, on the, on the ground level, I absolutely am there with, like. We have financial services folks and real estate folks on the ground floor, and as much as I like to see the real estate listings when I walk by with my dog. It's not an active use, right, it's definitely not an active use, we wanna have, it's not gonna pull people in, so I I wanna. Is there a way we can parse those two things that are services, right?
The subcommittee when we were talking about this, I think there was, honestly, right now, this snapshot in time. There is a concern about how many barber shops and salons are in Flemington. And that it just seemed to be like so many that, it was worrisome, I think it's something that the subcommittee would. Not really push back hard about putting back in, um, I just think it was in our discussion, they're, they're just so mad.
You are correct, Marsha. You are correct.
They can get the nonconforming use and the ones that are there, you're not talking about them, they don't have to move out.
No, no, I understand, but again, if we're trying to, if we're trying to encourage not only folks from outside to come in, but also provide services for residents. These aren't, these, they're, they're active, right, they're, they're, they're coming in, and again, I know that we have this. The, the challenge that we run into, this is not, I mean, every town has this problem, is that. It is a low cost of entry for an entrepreneur to start a nail salon or barber shop, because, because it is a, is a good business, it's labor intensive. The licensing requirements are relatively minimal, it's the capital requirements are relatively minimal for some. But it's, it's an opportunity for a local person to run a business too, right, it's like, that's, eh, there is not a good answer, to write the.
And by the way, but the way you say it, Jeff, when you talk about, and you're right, I mean. Services can be a very robust, um. A very robust mu- municipally wide, um, uh, shop to bring people downtown. Including people who live downtown, and you know, this is one of the, one of ours, you know, we talk about, we're gonna have two hundred and five apartments right in the center of Main Street. And these people need not only things to do and places to eat, and we're encouraging them to do that. With the zoning change, but you're right, they also need to get their haircut, and, um. Dare I say, go to a travel agent, what is that? Um, but, um, you know, so I, you know, I, the way you put it. I'm very open minded to putting services back in, I wish there was a way we could limit. I know we can't, but I wish there was a way we could say, you know, not every store can have a barber, have a, have a, have a. Red, white, and blue pole in front of it.
Right, and and we run, and we run to this problem because, because the, 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 the reason why. Forty years ago, all of these ordinances are written with S I C codes, there's a way to try to narrow it down, and it's. It's horrible, if from an enforcement perspective, it makes it a pain in the neck, and, oh, by the way, we haven't used S I C codes since nineteen ninety seven, so like.
But forty years ago, what happened was, we had. First, the Flemington mall opened, and then Bridgewater Contra opened, and it ravaged Main Street, the retail businesses were ravaged. And so then the government body wanted to find, and the playground wanted to find a way to try to. Keep the stores and the landlords in business, and now there's been this, you know. This economic swing or trend back, you know, forty years ago, going to Flemington South of the States to go Halloweening. You know, people were dropping their kids off from all over the county, and Somerset as well, because they could hit. A thousand condominiums in one night, and now it's back in, in style to come into a little town. And, you know, all these malls are closing, and s- strip malls, and Main Street could be a giant strip mall. Strip malls are back in style, Main Streets are back in style, shopping in small towns is back in style, malls are, you know, gone. Uh, because the kind of stuff that you go to a mall for, you can buy, you know, online, but the kinds of stuff that you find in a small town in shops. Can be very, very unique, yes, exactly, so like I said, I'm very open minded to putting services back in. As part of the discussion with the subcommittee, um, because our intention is to have that kind of turnover.
Right.
And put the offices where they belong.
Right.
Right, you have empty office buildings in town, um, including some beautiful class A space on Main Street. Um, and on Park Avenue, they're, they're empty or barely empty, and because it's so much easier to be right on Main Street. So I think putting things where they belong, and I won't disagree with you that. Um, it would be great to, people don't have to walk right down the street and find.
Question on this specific thing though, on the hairdressers.
Yeah.
Could they be considered, as they, they do sell product? Ladies, we know, you go and you. Could they be considered retail sales also, so therefore they'd be, they'd be allowed by that?
But then, but then we're, but then we're, you know, but then we're, but then we're in a spot where a zoning officer has to start doing an assessment as to how much. How much product is sold by this salon versus how much service is applied by this salon, and it's, it's, from an enforcement perspective, it's a mess.
I was just wondering if that's.
Retail is a really common accessory to a lot of uses, like you see, retail is accessory to office, retail is accessory to medical office, like you go. To your chiropractor and you buy a pillow or something like that, but, but that just makes it retail.
When we, when we spoke about this, and I think it was, I forgot that, that, um. Robin had participated during the V A S discussion, I thought she would have participated on more, it was really to define an active use. Right, so what is an active use, and, and the only way I can define it is, people coming and going, coming and going, not. Checking in at nine, going out to lunch, checking back in, because the other thing that I, that I questioned on this were health and fitness. Does that mean you can't put a yoga studio, where people are coming in every day, all the time, every hour on the hour, yoga? See, and again, I say yoga, and maybe yoga won't be a thing in, in the future, I don't know, um, but you wonder, like, like a gym. Or, um, are those considered active uses, it was just really like, what's active and what's not?
Yeah, so, um, so you're right, though, about the, uh, so we permit, uh, health and fitness facilities on the upper floors. And, or the basement, um, so yes, to your question, if you have a yoga studio or martial arts or a gym. That's gonna have to be the upstairs or, or the basement.
And it really, unless there's, like you had said, I, I know this is zoning, you're not A D A, but. Real, most of our buildings are not, uh, A D A, uh, uh, you know, up or down.
Yeah, I I could be wrong, I don't expect a lot of basement uses, but I do think there, there is at least one building, maybe a few buildings where. Being able to put a business, or at least a part of a business on, on the basement level, is gonna be very helpful. Um, from a marketing perspective, I think it's gonna be a big challenge, but, uh, from a zoning perspective, I don't have any. I don't think there's any downside to it, provided they can meet all of the construction requirements in order to do things.
Yeah, and again, I was just trying to, it was sort of exciting to go through this and say, active uses only, but then I was like, is that active? Or, or not active, and you think of a restaurant, right, who doesn't want more restaurants downtown? But, and not very active, especially if you got a restaurant that has a ninety minute seating, not at all.
Yeah, but the destinations though, aren't they, Todd, they're active in terms of the destinations for the town.
Right, but we, you know, we, yeah, so you can't do it by clock, right, like, this, 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 I was thinking about this, could we come up with a definition of like. You know, uses that generate X percent number of customers per hour, and then, then you get a fine dining restaurant, which wouldn't conform, so that, clearly that doesn't work. Right?
Fine dining restaurant is that, most of the stores are closed at that hour, so the parking spaces are all open.
Yeah.
Fair.
And you want uses that are, I think this, I mean, folks can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think the subcommittee is really trying to. Practice uses, when we talk about active uses of first floor uses that are really complementary to one another. So you're, you're going shopping, you're going to dinner or maybe lunch, and then you're gonna stop at the. At the brewery afterwards for a drink, or you're gonna go to a theater, and then you're gonna go to lunch. Or you're going to, uh, you know, there's indoor recreation, so to the extent that somebody wanted to do. Uh, one of these new arcade uses that folks are developing sometimes, you know, you could do that, and then. Couple that with some shopping and, and some dining.
Right, or you could drop your kids off at that, and then you could go walk.
But could, could all of these things that are semi-active. That aren't in, uh, allowed on the first floor, be conditional?
Like what?
Uh, like, like.
The book is that they found, well, we were trying to get away from specific.
In other words, you think, like, when you think of, like, coming and going, right, the doors coming and going, so it's retail, obviously, um. Uh, retail services, yes, uh, health and fitness facilities.
What were you thinking when you said semi, semi-active, like?
Like, like, more, like, some of these are, like an office, I, when you had said it, it sort of triggered, you said, listen, people come in at nine. They close the door, sometimes they lock the door, then they go out to lunch, and then they go back to the office, that is certainly an office use. I think it's quite progressive to not allow offices, cause I haven't seen that, I tried to look at other towns that I think are booming. And they, they're moving naturally, but we're trying to sort of force this issue, right, um, and.
How about the vacuum cleaner guy, who I love, what about, what is he?
He's retail.
He's retail, but, 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 well, I mean, is he selling vacuum cleaners, is he selling parts, or is he doing a service?
He's doing all of this, he does all of those things.
He's probably the most active, uh, from a definition, what I was saying, cause I see conditional uses, we're allowing, if you're in the back of the building. If you don't face Main Street, so, so why wouldn't all of these be, like, why couldn't you have a yoga studio, uh, on the back door, for example? Or, or around the side porch?
No, but. As long as your door doesn't, so there are some buildings in the D B district, we, we did discuss this quite a lot.
We did discuss this quite a lot.
Long time, that, we'll win through individual building.
Oh, I think they're, they're.
That have, their access is not on Main Street, the building is officially Main Street, but that, that particular block part of the building, it's. Has an access on another street, so we say.
Building, for example.
Yeah.
They, they have the use, yeah, you see what I'm saying?
So, so when we say first floor, I mean, the other, here's another real, another question, and this is, I mean, maybe I'm going down or out of all here. When we say first floor.
You didn't have many.
How, how are we defining first floor? Because there were, uh, so- several buildings, you know, the Deeds Building is what made me think of that.
Not the Deeds Building, you think, where is the first floor?
Where is the first floor of the Deeds Building? Right, because, because if, if you're talking about a building that has three steps above grade. Which we might say, okay, that's just a couple of steps, it's a porch, no problem, but if you've got half a flight of stairs, is that a se- is that a, is that a second story?
Right, but it's going through the back.
You're at, right, right, it's a change of elevation.
We had a very long conversation with this at one of our meetings.
And we've got, and we've got, you know, we've got some of the other buildings that were some of the older, so. So the building with the chamber is now, and then those series of, you know, those structures going north on that side of Main Street. Um, all the way up to what I'll call the Red Vanilla Building, for lack of a better word, um, right, those few houses. That were converted houses that are now office spaces, right, predominantly, like, those all have. Porches, so is that the first floor, is that not the first?
No, that's the first floor, it, it, you're, yeah, it's the floor that you're accessing from. From the, from the, from the street frontage, the Deeds Building I wanna talk about, who put that in a different head.
Cause it's so complicated.
Yeah, that's a separate, that's a very special circumstance, but if you're walking into the building, you know, just about every building in the D B district. Faces Main Street, and you know, you're gonna walk up from the sidewalk essentially, so if you're walking from the sidewalk through the front door. That is your first floor, and that's sort of an oversimplification, but if you've gotta go up six steps, and that's the floor that is facing Main Street. Or you've gotta go, I don't think there's anything that could down, but you know, if you've gotta go up two steps, three steps, si- six steps, so that first. That first accessible story that faces Main Street in this example, that is your first floor, if, you know, if there's. So I think that.
You know, it, 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 it does, because I know, because, because, I, again, I'm just trying to make sure that we're, that the ordinance is. Clear that we're, that's what we're trying to capture, because, you know, even in just one block where you've got. Lee Roth's Law Building, law office, right, that's a, that is a grad grade, right, that's, that's an office at grade, but then. You know, and then, then you've got some. You know, just north of that, you know, at grade, retail, retail uses that are clearly retail uses, right, and then. Like, so, so, and, you know, and then, and then I think that there's a difference, I don't know, we'll find out with parsing. Buildings that are set back versus buildings that are, like, like, there's lots of that, some of that active.
They're, they're houses, they were originally houses, so you actually go up, uh, almost half a story, don't you?
Right.
Like, you know, there's a, there's a hair salon in that one, and there's a, uh, you know what I mean?
So first floor.
We'd have to say.
Right, so there's no ambiguity, right, so there's, right, so there's no ambiguity the way this is written about those kinds of, of buildings, right?
So, the, the building that I'm, that I'm familiar with, that is. Sort of the odd man out is the Deeds Building, because it has that rear access that goes, that goes from the parking lot to the basement, I believe. And that use, or the use of that basement space is carved out, because it doesn't face Main Street.
Right.
So you're, so maybe it's the, maybe it's the rear, maybe it's the first floor from the rear of the building.
Yeah.
But the fact is that they, that that area does not face Main Street, and so it's gonna be able to capture those conditional uses. Even though it's the, we use air quotes, the first floor from the parking lot.
Right.
Then it's an office.
Yes.
Right. Head goes down there, instead of sludger's office, depending when he retired.
Yeah.
I'm not.
Cause all of that is access from the parking lot, and then if you have a portion of the building that only faces. Uh, one of the side streets, as I mentioned, that too is a conditional.
So spirituality is in the front right now, they would stay in the front, and so offices behind them. There's a yoga studio up, so it actually conforms to everything, it's in ordinance right now.
That's totally. That, yeah, I believe that's the case.
Definitely orthodox.
Where is that?
That's not there anymore.
But, I mean, but, it's empty, but it's, on the left hand side.
Yeah, so that would, because that's empty today, that would need to be one of the permitted uses, i- if this.
Unless it was a medical office.
It's not, uh, I don't know how long it's been vacant, but at least.
Years.
No, then it's, it's, it's been a bit.
So it can't be a dental office again, basically.
But it could be a brewer.
Not under this.
It would make a great.
So, so the other, uh, the other, um, conditional use was, which I didn't understand was. With the exception of an entry foot does not exceed eight feet, where, like a garage door.
No, not, I mean, sure, but not specifically, the purpose of that is to reflect the fact that we have buildings that face Main Street. Perhaps only face Main Street as far as public streets, and there are, for simplicity purposes, two doors. One accesses the first floor space, and the other one is really just accesses a stair to go upstairs. Um, and what we don't want is for somebody to file a permit to occupy that upper story space as an office. But they need to go through the first floor facing Main Street to get there, and so this is intended to provide clarity. And ensure that folks are not having zoning permit denied, just because they need to go through a door facing Main Street to get. To the upper story, or I, I guess the basement use.
So it's not, so it, it, it's written, regardless of where the door is. It's where the business is located, upstairs or downstairs.
Yeah, and so it gives you, eh, you know, the, the spaces I've seen on Main Street are basically a door and not much else. But I wrote the ordinance to give as much as eight feet to give you, you know, perhaps your three foot door, three and a half foot door, plus a couple of feet on either side. Um, just to really facilitate approval of these upper story uses using an existing first floor door.
And, and, um, so I only have one more question, so sorry, for, um, municipal uses.
I put that in every district.
Uh, and I, but I just wasn't sure, there was, there's no definition, so, like, for, uh, for. Use just for examples, because they don't make sense, uh, if, if the county sold their building.
Nope. I mean, else the municipality, else Flemington wants to use it.
Exactly, but if the county sold their building, unless another county, cause county is not municipal.
Correct.
So there are, there, so theoretically, they didn't own that building. Or, or it, I don't know how it works in the courthouse.
Under state law, they're all local governance counties, and municipalities are local.
So look, that, well.
I, I don't know if I'd agree with that, I, the argument might be that the county's not subject to, uh, yes.
And I only brought up that, only because I was trying to think of another municipal office, like, is a municipal office only for the. Benefit of constituents, well, no, because then it's also, uh, like, a senator's office.
Like the police department, it's a municipal office.
Yeah, so if, and if the borough wanted to open up, uh, like a downtown police annex. Or the borough needed office space, and there was an opportunity in the D B district. Now, I think the, the borough has the ability to supersede the zoning like, uh, like higher levels of government do, but. Personally, I like to ensure that there's no, uh, no potential question, uh, no controversy. The use is specifically listed, so if the borough feels the need to take space in any zone district that I'm working on, it has.
So, but, and, and again, because it wasn't a definition of municipal, and I think municipal, and that's why I brought up county, not that, I'm not. Picking up a county at all, but, um, you know, thinking of things that we don't know today. Every councilman has an office in Flemington on the first floor in the future, I'm making something up, but not every, not, not a governor. A governor couldn't come in and say, I would like to have my office in downtown Flemington on the first floor, cause that's not a municipal use, that's a government use. Correct, I just.
Yes, yeah, unless, unless they're in a, unless it is a state taking, uh, doing a government building, which is gonna supersede the zoning, but in terms of like.
But municipal is us.
Yes, it is borough of Flemington, period.
Right, so. So can I ask another one then, on terms of use there, um? So can I ask another one then on terms of use there? Um, not to go too toe for down that one is um houses of worship. How did? I know there's like federal law, let alone state and 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 all the rest of blah blah blah. So so how so can you talk about um how would someone who wanted to open up a church be handled on this?
So if you want to open a new church in the DB district, do we need to apply for a use variance? There's a lot of case law applicable to that. They have to, which I, we can get into, but I'm not sure we need to. But they need to request a use variance. The board has to consider the application carefully because of the case law. But it's but simply, the simple answer is they need to request a use variance.
So we are not running afoul of the religious law, the federal law and all the rest of it by saying religious uses are not permitted in the DB or DB two, but they are but they are committed somewhere in town, right, where where, because we allow them in residential district, in the in the in the VR ones and all the rest of it, right, we're we're
Yeah.
we're not, we're we're good, is what I'm I'm asking.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Can I ask, can I ask the off the obverse of that question? What if one of our churches closes?
Um, it could be reoccupied as an existing church or a new church, or it.
Would have to follow the new.
Or would have to follow the new zoning. If it sat long enough, it could be deemed in abandoned use, and then they would have to uh if it was a new house of worship, they would then have to reapply as a use.
No, I know there's deference when use variants come in, what has to do with religious uses, there's all sorts of stuff about it. It was more of lot, it was more, we have I don't know if the Baptist Church is in the TR or if it's in the DB two both, but we have at least two big churches on.
The one that made in made in church is not in the DB district.
Right, so is that, but we've got the Baptist Church and the Presbyterian Church.
Methodist, yeah.
Yeah, but both.
Both of them, yeah.
I don't think the Presbyterian.
I think you have.
It's even shown on the DB map.
No, it's it's it's.
No, we may we go like this way.
But they're but they're just outside the district.
Okay, and then the other, and then we do have this one church.
The Baptist.
It's a Baptist church, and we do have, we do have. It's at the uh Maple Library.
Okay.
It's right next to the.
Yeah.
And then um and then we have at least, I know of at least one other church that's operating on an upper story you know, in in the building and on on being um Main Street. I think the entrance might be on court.
The the entrance is on court.
Yeah, but the building itself is.
So they're.
Above barque.
It's above barque.
Yeah.
Or actually, yeah.
Yeah, over there, yeah. So 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 there's no, so that that would not be a problem, right, like we're 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 good.
That's actually that's not where they worship. That's where they, I think that's where their offices are and their meeting rooms and.
Right, there another space that I use.
They they rent the.
Miss Club, yeah.
Okay, so that would that would be permitted because you can have an office for essentially any any anything, as long as you're just doing the administrative aspects.
Okay, okay.
And it's upstairs and the access is on the side.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I I'm just, I'm just like kicking through like what's there.
The front is all the shelves.
We thought of all the permutations, but it's good to this.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And and Beth, the the other question, I I did notice in some other neighboring towns, they elevate the adult entertainment to the top of their ordinances as a nonallowed use. Because here, it really only says, we don't allow sale of adult materials in the retail section. But that doesn't go, I'm just trying to think, right, things that we don't know of today. It is not in health and fitness facilities, for example. There's not, it's not in higher education. Uh, so I'm just trying to think, why wouldn't we just like add it as right on top? We do not allow, we do not allow adult entertainment anywhere in this.
So I would say we can add that to this district, but you might want to do a separate ordinance that simply says these uses are not permitted.
All 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 the districts.
Yeah.
But 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 again, I'm just trying to think when you're referring, when you're looking at land.
Yeah, I know, but but you, we might want to address it as a single ordinance. It it's a very not.
It's a specific action.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Very explicit.
I just, I just.
You run you run into real issues when you ban a use, an entire use in an entire town.
Yeah, and it it has certain protections associated with it, so.
Because right, but right now, because the the way this ordinance is written is we don't, we, the only thing we don't allow from the adult industry is selling of material.
Because that's the definition of retail.
And the definition, but it doesn't mean, and I'm just trying to think of, it doesn't mean that if you wanted to have I I I think that we don't know of today, or maybe they do, it's just saying, I don't know, um, like, I don't know.
You're you're trying, you're you're dancing around a club.
Yeah, it's best club.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it's better. I mean, we can, we can amend the definition of theater and every use to say excluding adult uses, but I think a more comprehensive way to do it is to prohibit adult uses in the borough in a way that is legal.
Oh, oh, but it but if we don't have it, because again, if that's another ordinance, we have to get another subcommittee, if it's not in there, if it if this ordinance passes, we would allow certain things like that. I'm not sure we want it.
Wouldn't they have to come for a use variance?
No.
No, I mean, only if they're selling something, yes, because then it would be retail sales, which for which adult.
If they're teaching something, no. If they're participating in something, no.
Figure out what we're talking about.
I I agree with you. I have my own, she goes up and teaching something, like, you know, there's all this.
Can't we just make it? Can't we just say, I like, I like best idea? Can can we do that, Kara? Legally, can we say that? I I I do not believe so. We can certainly put limited restrictions on it that are appropriate and police power restrictions, but if we want to go down that road, I think we should certainly have a very separate discussion about that and uh make sure that it passes uh muster from a a case law perspective.
And I.
Thank you very much. I, not to be the moral majority, but it's one point one seven square miles, and I'm just trying to figure out where we put a bar.
Yeah. Like, so for instance, there are restrictions have been upheld within uh, you know, distances from schools. And a lot of times that will in and of itself, in smaller municipalities, kind of, you know, serve. Oh, Todd, Todd, Jeff, is that is that a way that, you know, would that be an acceptable way of going about it for you or?
Uh, however, like I said, I I believe when I read, I think it was Clinton, like, almost like one of the first or second lines, it says, we do not allow that.
And I think that there is uh statutory language that says that regardless of, unless, I think unless a municipality wants to permit it, if they have some, and Kara, if you think I'm wrong, let me know. But I think statutory language that says it can't be within X feet of certain land uses, like the schools and the houses of worship, unless the municipality says otherwise. We don't say otherwise. Um, but I guess to one of the points earlier, I think that that's a separate question. We can, I can add no adult uses to the definition of theater, and we can do a couple of like, a couple of checks here and there. But the big topic really should be evaluated more than just the DB one and two pictures.
Um, and Beth, is the adult uses, is that very clearly defined in in?
Yeah, it's technically a sexually oriented land use.
So I, but I have a question, thinking about Todd's idea of um thinking about a future use that we don't thought about, thinking about something that could be a health and beauty thing, that the pole dancing thing is quite popular now as a a workout, do we want?
I would.
Something to open that would be that, like.
It's a dance, it's a dance studio, it's a.
I know, that's what I mean.
No, I do not, but I, but it's not a sexual land use. That is an alternative to doing bar and yoga and Pilates.
So that would be allowed.
Yeah, that's like a yoga studio.
I guess.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
My my only, you know, my only question would be, because we're not going to solve it here, would be if there was language in another municipality that may be palatable. I just felt that we were, you know, I always think of ordinances, like as I was just looking at other towns, thinking, oh, what do they allow? Oh, I didn't know that. And some of them were very strict, you know, and it was really sexually explicit. I think that's what the words were. Uh, we don't allow this in the uh uh commercial district, for example, or.
What I would recommend is i- if you guys want to support the issue, let me pull the statute, because I I'm I'm certain that there are buffer areas from what they refer to it. Let me put the buffer areas on the borough map, and let's see where we land. There might be very limited need
to be next to burger.
to address it. I mean, I still think it's a good idea, but it's gonna, it's gonna tell us how big of a potential issue it is.
Yeah, I think that's definitely the way to go. We can circulate the statutes when she looks at that, if there are some areas, so we can properly regulate it, but you know, i- it this issue has been kicked around many, many, many times, and uh there are some towns, I will say, Todd, to your point, that feel so strongly about it that they may, I used to represent one of them up in Bergen County, they didn't care what the ordinances or the statute said, they weren't going to prohibit it, and come challenge me and let a court tell me otherwise. So, you know, looking at other towns as to how they do it is helpful, but I still think we want to make sure that we at least advise everybody of what the parameters are of what you can do.
And we would do that separate to this ordinance now, like, I always say that's a separate issue, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely. I like the idea of it being addressed in some permitted uh in the definitions, but the but the it really needs to be addressed comprehensively.
This is why these discussions are great, because I can come up with something.
I only know, I only know, I I mean, I do know that somebody was looking to put that in our town somewhere, because it was not listed. And I was asked, I was within the last five years.
I know.
No, it was just one of those things. Do you allow X? And all I could was Google, right?
X rated.
You you ask, like, do you allow X rated something? And you may not know, like, it just says you can't sell it. Clinton was.
Fair enough.
Again, I and I'm not, I don't want to belabor it, I just, I wanted to make sure that this was the time to talk about land use.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because in it, even in its entirety, it is, I'm gonna say controversial, but it's very progressive to not allow office on the commercial district.
Yeah.
But I couldn't find one town around us. So it's sort of like, wow, look at Flemington, we're either leading the pack or, you know, um, and you get great places, Somerville, Clinton. They allow doctors' offices, medical offices. It just happens that when when the town changes and people, like, the small guy gets pushed, not the small guy, the the smaller things get pushed out, and people want to open up more stores, because you make money. The reason why Home Depot goes next to Lowe's, and Lowe's goes next to Home Depot, so.
And you know, I think that this borough has been waiting a long time to get a more active downtown, because we've been talking about it for for around a decade, but at least that I can tell, and probably longer soon. And you know, my read on on the things that I've heard is that the borough is ready to to push the envelope and is ready to try to uh to try to better incentivize and to force active uses to occupy downtown spaces rather than allowing for to really just put its foot down on what is, what it finds appropriate, rather than just simply letting the market.
Well, this doesn't incentivize, well, this doesn't incentivize any business or any property.
Which is, right, I think encourages is better than.
Yeah, that's all concerned, yeah.
No, no. They they can do the nonconforming use and keep that use for.
Absolutely, but.
We're gonna encourage this as suggested, and it's gonna, it's gonna, it's a long term process. It's not gonna happen overnight. It's a long term thing, right?
Yeah, and and Todd, to your point about like not finding other ordinances, if you if you broaden past, like looking at New Jersey, if you look nationally, there are absolutely places that are doing what we're talking about here in terms of the active use and not having office space on the ground level in in districts. I mean, some of the some of the stuff that's been written up from folks like Strong Towns and some of those other stuff, it it it's out there in the field. It's just that usually it tends to happen in like larger cities. In certain districts tend to be the places that adopt those kinds of things um as a way to to kind of you know, intensifying focus the 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 active use spaces within those towns. Um, but it it there there's, it's out there. I mean, we're not, we're not inventing something here. This is it's it's well, it's well documented.
And you know, and I, I know that landlords, they want good tenants that are gonna pay the rent. That's what they care about.
Right.
But our residents, they want more to do downtown. They want this. You know, when I was uh running for office two years ago, going door to door, you know, the number one thing that I kept hearing over and over and over again is fix Main Street. Fix Main Street. What are you doing about Main Street? Get more things on Main Street. We need more to do on Main Street. Main Street, Main Street. The number two thing I heard about was the wall and circle, number roof. But number one was fix Main Street, get it alive.
And I think the fact that, I always think of the fact that the wa- the waste angle is and how active and and vibrant and moving.
And it's because of zoning, because it's zoned.
That is what people are craving, and that, and people have gravitated to it, because it's them. People crave that on Main Street too, I think, and I I that's what I think we're trying to achieve is the opportunity to have that kind of thing.
And I look at, I look at poor Little Rose Line, the most, one of the most beautiful homes in Flemington borough that is zoned in an office complex.
Yeah.
And it sits there empty and rotting away.
Yeah.
And it would be such a beautiful office for somebody. And nobody goes there because now it's difficult to fix, but fixable. But it's easier to do whatever you want to do up on Main Street versus dealing with those spaces that are zoned for office specifically. And then, um, you know, it's.
And to your point, Todd, about helping and like, you know, helping businesses transition to these things. But I mentioned something a few meetings ago about, there there is like um the tax.
The baby program, yeah.
If 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 landlords or businesses are looking to transition, buildings to be more amenable to this ordinance, for instance, they can take advantage of that, and that's.
Because they get a tax from five years, they do. No matter what, how, no matter how much money they spend, you know.
Right.
So.
Right, because we would, uh, to this point, because we have a lot of, not a lot, based on your your chart, you know, it's all, it's all based on your perspective, but you know, there's some things that are so officey downtown. It's uh, it's like you can only think of it as an office unless you were to blow off the storefront, for example. And and put a nice storefront in there.
But did you ever see Lee Roth's office being anything other than retail until they did what he did? That was always retail. It was always.
Right, until until he undid, until he undid the storefront.
Exactly. That's exactly right. Never, never saw that coming, you know?
It was an antique shop.
Oh, but it was never open.
Never open.
Until they closed.
But it was an antique shop.
My entire life, never opened.
And.
But it's not, it's not forcing anybody in, because they, this is a process, it's a long, it's not gonna happen overnight. It's encouraging that to happen and.
Right, it's a long game.
No, I I know, I think it's it's I think.
What did you say, Beth, to me? This requires patience.
Yeah, it requires patience.
We just, we just have some vacant places on Main Street that are not retail conducive. And you know what? I I I I could give you a list, only because I I've been looking to open up a retail shop on Main Street since the day I moved here, and there's not one shop that, you know, with with a classic storefront, glass windows, a door. It, we don't have it. It it's, it's, you want it, you really want it, but it's, and so I'm thinking that if there wasn't a baby improvement or all came together, that you could say, hey, listen, this is a good, this is a good thing. Um, instead of saying, hey, you know what, it's gotta be a restaurant, I I, you know, there I I look, I I looked at a space the other day, I I, but I was, I looked at the space the other day, they said, we don't allow restaurants. And I'm the landlord, I don't allow restaurants.
Well, interestingly, the the whole script where where the vacuum cleaner guy is, all those now offices.
Yeah.
Thirty-five years ago.
It was all retail.
It was all retail, with big windows. And Rick McCall is convinced that Don Schuman just plastered on, fronted.
Windows underneath.
And he could peel it off. And he's dying for the gig when a homeowner says restoring, kill this stuff off. He's convinced and unmeets it.
Yeah.
It's all big windows.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, it's 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 one of those things where I think if we, if, and again, it it's more of a communication, because it does seem restrictive to be able to say to a landlord, you know, that that, right, but Main Street is not back yet. We are still, we still have too many vacancies, so we want to hope that this this starts to trend going the other way, especially for the business.
The hotel, you know, the the redevelopers told us at a meeting, and he did, he was okay with us making this public, is that his intention is to have the hotel uh the plaza and the restaurants open in the third quarter of twenty twenty-five. He's hoping for as early as the Fourth of July, but possibly later. He's got to have the skin done on the apartment complex, because he can't have people sitting in a plaza while construction is going on.
Great.
So, and you know, and once he's got the skin on the apartment complex, it's gonna go fast. So that's, you know, and like you said, he, right, that's, he made it, he made it very clear he had no problem with us saying publicly um that he was looking at all those, all that opening, and you know, and it's like the hotel traffic is one thing. It's gonna bring, I think, some business to downtown, that, you know, people who stay overnight are gonna be tired or whatever, they they may just stay in the hotel and eat in the hotel and never really go onto the street. It's those apartments that, you know, I'm counting on making a significant difference.
Absolutely.
They're making the restaurants once in a while, but they're not.
If I, if I could be that person, could, maybe we could move to the DB two.
Well, actually, first, I, could I be the person that answers the people online? Because we've been having a great discussion, and we haven't really heard from the people online, so I'm gonna check them and then go to DB two. Is that all right?
I need to run the meeting, I just, I want to, I mean, we could be here all night.
No, I know, and I, that was a great discussion, a great discussion.
Really good discussion.
So, the people that are online, you know who you are, and can you, like, unmute yourselves and, and join in if there's anything that you wanted to add to what the people here in the, in the building, in the room, if that could.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak, it's Dennis, I, I like, um, on the retail sales, like adding the personal care nail and hair salon. To allow that, I think, um, it's a good argument for that, not, I'm not so sure about dry cleaner. Just because, uh, I don't know what the rules are, where they have to be away from other buildings, I know the one.
Highly regulated by the DEP.
Yeah, so, but, um, but I, I like the dialogue and I think that would be really good, um, to have retail sales include that, that's my input.
Uh, I think to kind of jump along that, like, I, I agree with Dennis about that, but at the same time, like, especially with the apartments coming along, we want to make sure we're not denying any functionally active businesses. So like, a dry cleaner, while it may not be the prettiest, it's incredibly functional, it creates the foot traffic that retail needs. Um, I mean, that's really what a retail business needs on Main Street is foot traffic. So, especially in the beginning, because we're talking about again, being patient and growing it over time. We gotta do little things, but I think, you know, like, again, like, it's the functionally active businesses that we need to try and encourage. And it's exactly what like Todd and everyone else, and that we're all agreeing to at this point, it's just how do we get that foot traffic on Main Street again? Especially now that we have so many, hopefully more people coming in with these apartments and the hotel and everything. But it's really, you know, coming from a, a business background. In a, in a pretty, you know, content and dense area, like, foot traffic is what you need to get the retail kind of going, and so how do we get that back?
Right, so are we kind of saying that we are such as retail sales and retail services?
I just think it's, it's tough to kind of, it's tough to, it, it's, it's tough to deny certain services, I think. So it's just kind of keeping an open mind about what, again, like, wha- what would be functional in these spaces? And what would be functional for the residents of the area too?
I think, I think the subcommittee can take a look at that, I mean, personally speaking, you know, that I, I actually am one of the few people I know who actually still uses a dry cleaner. You know, as, as this fashion has changed and fabric has changed. You know, like, my dry cleaner used to be like, you know, that little raft that spins around, used to be just packed, and now it's very empty. And I, you know.
There's pickup, there's pickup, if you drive by my house any Tuesday morning or Friday, you'll see a big yellow bag. And I know a lot of people use that service in the borough. So it's something, yeah, I've seen it at your house, Jeff, too, when they leave it closed, it's great, but.
I mean, I'm not, I don't feel really threatened about that, but I think it's something the subcommittee should spin about, you know, are there any services that you wouldn't want? Um, Dennis specifically said personal care services, I, you know, I mean, services to me include things like, like, like I said, the posse, travel agent. But, um, we, I think we should bring it back to the subcommittee and have them figure it out, like definitely, I think there's an interest in.
Cause then, like, what do we consider like chirp? Like, that's a service, right? Chirp, the, the, um. Yeah, it's like a children's activity, you know?
Learning center.
Yeah, that's more of like a learning center, or maybe some sort of a, like a party space, I don't quite know what it is, but it's probably, they're doing classes and whatnot, that's a learning center.
And it's allowed in the first floor.
Uh, that is, you know, that is a.
Yeah, there, there are uses there that I think we, that, that some of the definitions here need to tweak, tweak some of this, yeah.
Like the DIY, the painting place that.
Right, yeah.
That, that would be an artisan, that would not be, that would be manufacturing, I think, or learning.
You've got that play place that you used to paint.
Right, but they would, and again, I, I think, you know, I, what I've been taught over the last year from Beth, right, is when you say services, it's services, right? You can't say, but why do we need another, you know, barber shop? And well, because if the market calls for barber shops, the market calls for barber shops. But same thing if you had, you know, it's just the question of the thing that, somebody's gonna have to interpret our zoning officer. Uh, and like chirp, right, to say like, well, we do kids' parties, kids' party.
Yeah, but wouldn't that come under indoor recreation, so we allow that?
Yeah, so.
That's indoor recreation, right?
Yeah, that's potentially indoor, I don't, I'm a little out of my own lines, I don't quite know what chirp is, so I'm, I'm afraid of classifying something I don't fully understand. But, uh, so we have indoor recreation, that's permitted use, so I mentioned arcades, uh, but if they're doing, let me just find the definition.
Or artists and studios, those are allowed, remember, the only two that are on the first row is the number two and number four, are the ones that say first, not including the first floor. So, retail sales, artisan studios, brewery, indoor recreation, theaters, all on the first floor, on the lower floor. So those, you would cover, like, that would cover all that, they'd be allowed. And those are definitely. And then you're ADA, because then on the floor, people can get to them.
Yeah, EAs, yeah, that's.
ADA possible.
Yeah.
Uh, again, it's an interpretation because of what you went through, and, and they're so specific, like Patreon pottery, you're manufacturing, you're making something.
So individuals, if you're not, people are not manufactured to sell somewhere else, it's an indoor recreation activity.
So if you're doing an artisan, if you're doing like an interim pottery, pottery place, a couple of things. One, your zoning officer has to make these interpretations, I can't do it for him. But if I were your zoning officer, for whatever it's worth in this moment, I would say that is going to be, an art studio, that's an establishment for display, so maybe they're displaying the pottery. Uh, sale of the pottery, practice of pottery, instruction of the pottery.
It, it might be helpful as we're going through this, and I know I'm taking notes, and obviously we have minutes, and Beth is also. To dovetail some of these concerns by addressing the definitions of what we have, or including more definitions. So to Todd's point, manufacturing, you can say manufacturing shall not include, or shall include, or, you know. So to kind of help in that regard, because I think one of the other things that, that the subcommittee is trying to do, and correct me if I'm wrong. But by removing the SIC codes, I think we're trying to make it easier, not, you know, more difficult and more confusing. So, you know, we don't want to create that other issue, and maybe by expanding or clarifying some of the definitions of what we're including as permitted uses. And making sure they encompass, you know, at least everything we know right now, you know, that, that might help.
Wouldn't it be, so I know when we were closing out, I was on the subcommittee last year, I know our zoning officer had asked to participate. Wouldn't that be a perfect thing to say, could you just read through these definitions?
Well, Todd, to that point, that's certainly something we mentioned already as a subcommittee, and certainly something that as chair, um, uh, what it committed to. That we, we needed to have a discussion process, that interpretation, to make sure that the zoning officer knows what we meant by this. So that, and we have a discussion till we get on the same page. And it's not just with this, that I'm intending to extend that to various.
Oh, God, you're with the SIC codes.
But if I'm doing that, it's getting with the SIC codes, yeah, exactly. So, and to that point, that, um, coming, that my, my nervousness about defining some of these things too detailed is, it's almost like going into SIC codes. And that's my worry, is we've got to be careful of balance, we think, we're trying to get away from.
And by the way, our, our zoning officer likes the SIC codes, because he said they're so specific, it's easy for him to say no.
I know, yes, but that's, but, but.
But that's not what.
I think him saying too, him saying no too much is part of why we've been busy.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and that's why I committed to that process that we need.
So we have to, we have to prevent the ordinance and put in all new SIC codes, and add new things that didn't exist twenty-five years ago, or we need.
Well, we don't use SIC codes anymore, we use NICS codes, and I, are too many of them to.
And we can even clarify and put something like, if, you know, there's more than one, like, to use Beth's example of the pottery, you know, if you're displaying it, selling it, and having a service. You know, if there's more than one of these types of things, then, you know, then it's gonna be classified this way. I, I don't know, I, I, I agree, we don't want to get too crazy, but where it seems appropriate, that there could be too much interpretation, you know, it's something for us to look at.
And Beth, are there things to make them simple, because I think it's a great conversation, but not to zero out, uh, new businesses, but when we talked about chirp, you know, of, of. Cause we have both a learning center and higher education and trade, aren't they really all, there's places where people go to learn something?
You know, uh, higher education is just for adults, and learning center, it, so the definition of higher education is.
Beyond high school, I see that.
Full-time, yeah, adult education, learning center is, uh, references students, but there's essentially no age restriction. And so, when, uh, just, uh, the addition of learning center was a late addition to my work with the subcommittee. Quite honestly, I had noticed that definition in borough code, and that was what triggered that, that we weren't allowing education for students as part of the discussion, so got it in there.
And I love the idea of, of, of asking our zoning officer, because this should make it easier. And that's why we're trying to say things like an office is an office, and there's, there's desks, or computers, or phones, or something, you're going at nine, you go to lunch, and you go home.
Yeah, we're part of the role, we need definitely as part of the long line process. I, I think we're all on the same page and understanding the same things, it's something that we can do.
I think it's appropriate for the subcommittee, you know, through this process, to hear the planning board's thoughts, for us to get a sense as to how the ordinance ought to be amended. And then to, to do that work, and then share the ordinance with the zoning officer, because he's not, you know, he's gonna be providing guidance on how the ordinance might need to be tweaked and clarified. But the role here is about the big picture policy.
And we have the zoning officer, um, it's a public question for cast, and we have the zoning officer in one of the sub, it's important to benefit now for them, can we have one? So we can have him come to one of those and discuss it, and that maybe, and that would be great, whichever way he chooses to do, whichever is best, with whatever. Um, I just wanna jump, sorry, before we go to. Anybody else on the board online want to contribute to the discussion, or questions we've had, Melissa, Adrian, Mike?
I'm good right now, nothing else to add.
I'm good, I just wanted to say thank you to the subcommittee for getting us to where we are, I think they did an excellent job. And there's a little couple of points that we went over that need some clarifying, but I think, I think we're moving in a good direction.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, you have anything to add?
Just clarify, the, uh, dry cleaners again, to me.
Dry cleaners are a retail service, they will be, this ordinance permits them on upper stories and then as conditional use, uh, essentially on side streets. Yeah, dry cleaner, the likelihood of dry cleaner coming in is going to, in part, is of course depend on zoning, but also, uh, I think part of the discussion was they're subject to a significant amount of environmental regulations to ensure it's a, a safe facility for them and surrounding area.
Yeah, I would strongly oppose any dry cleaners with dry cleaning on the premises. Just because of what happened to our two wells from, uh, Turpoc cleaners.
But a dry cleaner, Beth, to that point, could come as a service where they say have a spot where they collected and then returned, but the, the actual processing was done. They could, you know, I mean, they could park at the station on Main Street, and then people could recover from there, and then they could.
I have to, I have to think about whether or not we could distinguish those uses.
Right.
Um, given that, uh, that the environmental issues are subject to DDP as opposed to local land use, so let me just think about that.
Right.
Yeah.
I was saying, you know, processing, if it's done somewhere that's safe, and then they can bring it, they could have, would we, would it be one of those awkward things that we had to deal with? Where we had a fashion retail thing, that we had to sort of interpret that it's, anyway.
Yeah.
You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
But isn't it, I mean, I, I hear what Mike was saying about dry cleaners, it's sort of like talking about barber shops, you know, right? But the way the law works, like a service is a service is a service, you're providing a service to a customer, they're coming in and getting a service. I mean, for, for the zoning officer, do you provide a service? Yes, and that service, we might be missing hundreds of services that are not yet known, um, you know, for. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree, it's just to Mike's point where he says, like, you know, I wish you could say, you know, we don't want a dry cleaner downtown, we don't want it, but you really can't.
Well, yeah, you, you, you can, you could say services, and Beth, you know, tell me your thought on this, but, you know, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds on everything, but you can say services with the exception of.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's, that is an option, now whether or not that's something that makes sense here, you know, but that's not, dry cleaners are not constitutionally protected. Let me put it that way, so that's, that's really what the bar is.
But from a DEP perspective, we probably would be covered, just like we could directly be covered from an adult enter industry.
Correct.
Sense. Um, so, let's move on to DB two then, are we ready to move on to DB two, which is almost, yeah, because we're almost the same.
Okay, so fundamentally, the same types of things occurred for the DB two. Which is, uh, the first thing you'll notice is we updated the, uh, the definition, or excuse me, the purpose of the district. Um, importantly, uh, now both of these districts, I think this was, this was an issue with DB as well, but, uh, 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 it references the right district, and it, and it provides some, some description and, and what this purpose is about, more or less, from a zoning and from a character perspective. And so, it talks about the DB two being mixed use, inviting, but it's also this transitional district between the downtown and the VAS district. And or the, the downtown and the residential districts. And so it, it has a little bit of a different character in terms of, uh, what surrounds it, but it also has a little bit of a different character in terms of. Bigger setbacks, et cetera. But more importantly, uh, than, than the character description, the ordinance also, uh, has a significant change to the permitted uses. Similar to the DB, we deleted all of the SIC codes and instead provided a handful or eleven permitted uses, and then a couple of conditional uses. So the permitted uses include retail sales, but excluding restaurants and breweries, and I'm gonna circle back to that later. Art stu-, it permits, uh, art studios, also health and fitness, higher education, learning center, and apartments on upper stories, or, excuse me, not the first floor. But same issue, predominantly it's gonna be, uh, upper stories, but the basement is not included from a zoning perspective. It permits offices and medical offices as permitted uses, no limitation as to the location within the building. It also permits existing single-family homes, municipal offices, excuse me, municipal uses, and then any combination of the permitted uses. For the conditional uses, it adds restaurant, breweries, indoor recreation, and art, artisan manufacturing as permitted uses. And then specifically permitted uses on any floor, if they're not adjacent to a single-family or a two-family home. And it calls out that this is just not applicable to upper story apartments, so that there's no confusion. And the purpose it, for this conditional use is to recognize that this district is, uh, has historically been less, uh, less active, but less busy, uh, than the DB district. And it is, there are many lots here that are surrounded by single-family homes. And so, we have limited these most active uses, or these uses that are most capable of having offsite impacts. And I'm thinking about the, uh, the artisan manufacturing, uh, as well as the restaurants. Those uses are limited to where they don't abut these more sensitive land uses, the one and two family. And then the last item here is that same addition to the accessory uses, which is simply to permit anything that is customary and incidental to their principal permitted use. Which I think is really just, uh, best practice for any accessory use standard. And so that's the, that's, uh, an overview of the ordinance, it's, I would say, it's both more restrictive and less restricted, depending on what, what use you're looking at. But it's been tailored to, uh, to better fit this district that is, uh, an important commercial district, but really less intense than the DB one did.
So no services?
No services are not permitted.
The DB two, though, we're talking really, it's like, it's not that much real estate, right? I mean, it's, we're talking, it's, it's Main Street off of Main, part of Main off, right, and not really much past Stangle, right? It's, it is Church Street off of Main, but not, but, but, so, right, that, that's it, right? I mean, like, I'm looking, right? So, 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 a couple of questions there then, um, we have, um, not to talk about an open application, but, um, the proposed DB two stuff, there is, did, did y'all look at consistency with the Liberty Village, um, reading on the plan?
Cause that's, you know, potentially have two restaurants on the church.
The Liberty Village plan references the VAS district for those two uses.
Doesn't actually, because I did rest.
Right, but, but, because DB two on Church is right up to the top end of the, of the redevelopment area, especially, right, it's right next to it.
So the Alex Building, Grand Country.
Yes, but those lots are in the redevelopment area, they're subject to the redevelopment plan, and the redevelopment plan says that those lots are subject to the VAS district.
Even though they're, even though they're current, even though they're on our existing maps in the DB two, the superseding redevelopment plan.
Basically, we don't them to the VAS, for simplicity's sake.
And there's no inconsistency in terms of adjacency with, let's be. And there's no inconsistency in terms of adjacency with what's being proposed in D B two with what's gonna happen at the north end of the re, of the Liberty Village Plan, right?
I don't think I understand.
So like, well, part of what you were describing was, um, you know, less intense uses, where you know, no restaurants, right? Because, but like, and especially because the, where the D B two hits Church, where it hits Brown over there, there's, there's obviously gonna be an intensity of 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 residential uses over there, right? It 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 aligns with what's being talked about, right? It's not gonna be a problem with what's being proposed, right?
I think Liberty Village doesn't.
Like Liberty Village is gonna be a bunch of housing over there, like, right? So we've got Round Street, we've got the new spine of what's gonna run through it, right, the extension of Central, I don't recall. Like, there's, we're not worried, I just wanna show, we're we're not worried that what's being talked about here in the revised D B two is gonna be too intensive a use for the housing that's in the, on the north end of the of the Liberty Village.
No, I don't think so because, because it was, I mean, it's certainly, it's certainly not the intention because the D B two is intended to be sensitive to the existing single family homes.
Right.
So, uh, there's no reason to think it would not be sensitive to, uh, those homes that will will be existing presumably in the future.
Okay, I I I think it is. I just wanted to just note that, I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Drill down some lots, there's actually very few lots, but anyway, a lot of them are single family.
Yeah, I'm looking at the map, yeah.
There's very few lots within that that actually would be allowed to do.
But to your point on consistency, would it be the same on coming off of Stangle? You know, the new mixed use facility that was approved at Burkitt's? That was gonna have restaurants on the first floor, that that's not allowed on this plan? But that is, I think.
It is not subject to the use warrants, so as long as they construct the project within, within their timeframe without essentially, uh, having the the approvals be voided, they'll, they'll be able to, uh, you know, I'm gonna have to look at the resolutions.
I'm not sure it's specifically called restaurants.
Yeah, I'm not sure, as I, as I say this out loud, I'm not sure they call that specifically.
Coffee shop or something.
Maybe no best and take a.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a look and confirm that. If, if they're just, they, I have to look at the ordinance, unless they said specifically we want a restaurant or a cafe in this location, it would be subject to the permitted uses in the district. They may have just said, uh, the commercial uses permitted in the district are what's proposed on the first floor and those will now be, whatever the ordinance is.
However, when they got their approval, it would be what would be allowed or when they got their approval.
But when, but when they go in and they file a zoning permit for presumably that first floor use, they're gonna be subject to the new zone.
So that, so I would, I would ask that we check that because that seems a little inconsistent. And and then when I think of the D B two along Mine Street, like the old clothing mansion. Be a perfect restaurant, but but that would not be, I don't know what we would want that. It'd only really be office.
Doesn't it fall under the conditional usage, D? I thought it would fall under that because it's a large property and that allows restaurants, same with the one that's Burkett.
But a single family home?
Yeah.
I didn't think so. So they would be permitted.
As a conditional.
Yeah, as a conditional use.
We thought about that building, didn't we, in the discussion?
Yeah.
And then, just coming back to, um.
Well, it does, it does provide a single family home, but it's now being used as a single family home.
That's correct, it's a single family use, not a single family building.
It's got apartments upstairs and it's a, uh, there's.
Yeah, there are curses or whatever over there.
Oh, yeah, so. So again, they're getting a condition now. Can Burkitt's get a non-conform use in a non-compliment, yeah?
Well, it's in their resolution.
Right.
Because they, we don't, we, I don't remember, I don't think any of us remembers what's in the resolution to that.
I don't think they, they talked about a restaurant, I'm not sure.
I know that was in their renderings, but I'm not sure they had heard of it.
Yeah.
But, um, I mean, like, if they're, if the resolution says uses permitted, that's, you know, or there was, like, that's, it's gonna be in the resolution, so we shouldn't speculate on what it would be.
Still will check that.
And the, the, the absence of things like a restaurant or brewery is to soften, like I think of Lambertville that has like Bell's Tavern, which is right in the middle of a neighborhood, right? Great neighborhood spot, but is to eliminate that kind of juxtaposition.
It is.
A restaurant startup in between two, um, two.
And and Mine Street doesn't have the kind of parking. Yeah, and I I I hate using Bell's cause that has been there for, you know, I I decades, maybe a hundred years. I'm not sure of the history, but for as long, for at least four years.
And there's no parking.
There, no, zero parking, you're best walking there. Um, but be that as it may, that is the type of situation that this ordinance seeks to eliminate. Because, you know, Bell's has been there for forever, so, but what we're dealing with here right now is there are no restaurants existing within the, yeah, there's no restaurants existing within the D B district, D B two district. And so that means anybody that that is coming in now is going to be creating, potentially going to be creating an impact on the surrounding area as opposed to a Bell's, which is the, the land use is changing over in the area or the new residents coming, looking at the bar and the restaurant going, that's my neighbor. So it's, I I think that's a fair distinction to make in terms of, uh, impact on the residents.
And then you're saying, Dennis, to your point on like the clothing mansion, if we all know what what that is, whatever you call it, the the large mansion on on Mine Street. It really, it would be a conditional use to be a restaurant.
Could, it could based on the conditions, yeah.
And based on this, as long as that lot next to, it's hard to tell, but.
It's not, because one is the right street, central link buildings over there, so on one side, and then, well, no, sorry, there's the building between.
The mansion has a large, and they have a large apartment.
And they got a parking lot, it's not.
It's almost like an ideal spot. That's why we wanted to.
But it also backs up to, it also backs up, there is, I mean, there's cross access to.
Plus there's a funeral.
Yeah, exactly, to through through all of this property on Main Street, but that's a whole other.
Okay. So it's really the, 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 the most restrictive is no services in this area. Really, I'm just trying to think, I mean, restaurants, you could see, but there's not even a conditional use for a service.
That's correct, yeah. I think, I think that is the most restrictive, that, that and the restaurants, um, are probably the two.
But then if you look at the plots that are involved, we we looked at them and thought, what what would you put here? I was gonna say, we're not restricting the plots that are there, not really.
You have a lot of very.
Didn't think there was anything suitable.
Yeah, you have a variety of very small, narrow lots in the D B two district. There are some notable exa-, uh, exceptions, but those are, like we just talked about, the clothing mansion, for example. Um, and so they, they actually don't abut single family residences and they would have more flexibility, but I'm looking at the uh, smaller lots, for example, on Church Street.
Yeah.
And some of the smaller lots even on Mine Street. And so those properties don't offer the opportunity for a lot of parking. Um, to the extent that the services or restaurants that they might be, uh, interested in would generate, but also as a result of their narrow lot, they also don't have a lot of opportunity to offer from, from residents that are likely to be here or perhaps to the side.
So can I, can I ask this other question then? Because of what you're saying, was there any discussion about rezoning parts of the D B two into the rezon? Like, I'm I'm specifically thinking about Church Street part of this, cause Mine Street, I think, is, is it's a little bit different. But if we think about the Church Street section of the D B two on the south side of Church, which is most of it. You know, you've got a combination of an insurance office and a bunch of homes. And then on the other side of Brown, you have, let's see, there's barbershop over there, there's like a couple of businesses over there, but it's mostly residential, it very much feels like the T R, which it abuts against, right? The, on the other side of Church Street, on the north side of Church Street, behind what eventually be Peaberry's, right? Over that corner there on Main, which is still in the D B one. Um, again, you've got like a, there's a doctor's office and then you got a couple of residential properties there as well, so I I I'm, I'm, I know that it wasn't necessarily the charge of the committee to this, but but because of some of these, because in particular like this area around Church Street, is there, is it worth considering maybe moving some, some section of this into the T R? Is it, is it worth, I mean, I I'm just thinking like, I can't imagine a use that's gonna go into these, these parcels that aren't housing at this point.
So a couple of things, um, one, what might go in there over time? If you have offices for the, for those that are looking for alternative locations, perhaps that's not too far away from you. So you're right, there are, there's a predominance of single family, I think largely single family homes, maybe a couple of two family homes in that area that might be suitable for a residential district. The one thing that I would ask for the board to consider is what's your vision for this area of Church Street? Historically, not, not, um, historic, but recently, it's been thought of as, as part of, uh, I mean, in, prior to the Liberty Village redevelopment, it was thought of like as a gateway from the Route thirty-one area into Liberty Village. And so that's, I think, that's, that's part of the reason why the D B district has been there for so long, D B two, for so long, as it's an opportunity to try to convert this area to more of a, um, a mixed use area to complement what was Liberty Village. Now, we have a handful of uses that are gonna remain on Church Street by the, uh, that are still in the Liberty Village. We just talked about like the old, um, the brick building and then the white, uh, foundry building that's there. Um, though, I would ask the board, you know, what is your vision? Do you still have a desire to see this area of church serve as, as this gateway into, uh, into this area? Cause it certainly connects, uh, to, uh, to Stangle and and there's some access to that. Or would you rather see this area get converted to a residential district to facilitate less activity?
Which is why I was asking a question about Liberty Village redevelopment plan before, because this particular spot over here, that Church Street part or the, I mean, the literal existence of why there's a traffic light at Turn Lane was because of all the traffic going into Liberty Village historically, right? And the, again, the south of Church Street V A S, that's gonna be subject to the redevelopment plan for Liberty Village, it's primarily residential, right? And and I should ignore the Church Street in the V A, in the existing V A S is, you know, Turntable Junction. And there is, there is active business use in through all that there as well, right? And so, so I, and there may not be a better answer than D B two for 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 this section over here. Maybe, it may be fine, but I'm just thinking as Church Street west of Maine is no longer serving as that huge gateway where the buses were literally coming into, to, 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 to Liberty Village, because Liberty Village is not gonna be the same, you know, retail destination. But we do have the rest of, you know, Turntable and then obviously the connection to the Stangle District, right? So I, 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 I don't, because we're, it seems, it seemed like there was like a lot of effort to try to figure out what D B two could and couldn't be because of its adjacency to the residential uses. And I think we're gonna see a, a greater intensity of residential uses, at least on the south side of Church Street over there, so I I don't. I don't, it might, and that, that's why I was raising the question. Again, I'm not trying to.
There's a question on that in that block.
That block, I'm talking about mine, Mine Street is a different, is a different, pretty interesting.
I think it should be considered, you know, we're focused largely on there are a couple of homes on the north side of Church and then I don't know, six, eight homes on the south side of Church Street, whether or not it should be in a different district. And I, I think that's a worthy question, but I just wanna remind folks to just expand your view a bit. Because if you look at the north side of Church, a bit larger, really the square from Fulbert, Main, Central and Church, this is largely non-residential uses.
Right.
And so this area, the south side of Church and those couple of homes are either over time gonna convert to something that is more complementary to that area, um, and will realize the vision of Church Street being this gateway and, and this street that complements the, the shopping area, although now it's gonna be a little bit of a different shopping area. We want to, uh, try to intensity and maintain that area as a commercial, as a residential area. I will say that if Turntable Junction does particularly well in the coming years, those residences are gonna feel that as a result, and if they're in a residential district.
On the other hand, we're gonna, Liberty Village is building a brand new park right down the street from all those houses. And, you know, they're not particularly large houses, they're not on big lots. They're nice, you know, for the way prices are in the borough nowadays, they're nice, you know, starter homes right down from a brand new public park, so.
That's why, that's why, that's why we raised the question.
It can go either way.
Yeah, so that's why I asked, what's the vision for, I would say, this area of, uh, church, like these homes facing Church Street into the north? Do you wanna see these homes integrate into the commercial areas? Simply put, do you wanna see them integrate into the commercial areas to the north? Or do you wanna see them stay residential and really integrate to the residents, residential background to the south? I think both are worthy visions. But I think it's a policy question that the board and the council should ask.
I mean, without more information about what happens to Turntable, hopefully sold to somebody who cares about properties. Uh, or how successful this new park is in a couple of years after it's built. I don't know, we haven't had data to to answer that right now.
Yeah, D B two makes the most sense right now, in my opinion, but, um.
And it's what they've been, so it's, yeah, but.
We need to make a, make a note to revisit this at some point in the future when something changes that either Turntable or the park is built, how more desirable this neighborhood may become because it's got a pocket park.
And it, and it may very well be that, what we see, it may, you know, it's zone D B two, these residents use to stay residential. And they just, and then we, we revisit this in a few years, like you're saying, like, we realize, yeah, this is just, we should be T R and that, and on the south side of Church Street, because that's just what it is.
It becomes office alley. I mean, within the future, every one of these homes can turn into an office, that's where you can put an office.
Well, I mean, that, I mean, we've had at least one there now.
And it could be the best of both worlds.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I just, again, this is mine of town, so I'm kind of, you know, particularly thinking about through, but but I just, it's, it's always, it's always been like a weird,
Right.
weird little stretch post-world's-first outlet mall.
And then they have very limited parking, I mean, there's, you know, people park on both sides of the road.
Exactly.
It's very hard to park there, it's very cramped, you know?
I think we're talking Turn, but Turntable Junction.
There's not much really Turntable.
No, and it's, Turntable's all signs, Turntable only.
A little bit, yeah.
But the, um, during the day, there are parking spaces if people go to work. This became an office, like real offices. There's, there's never gonna be, uh, empty.
And then, you know, yeah, so anyway, I I I don't, I don't, not too much of a difference, I just, it was because, because that part of town is, 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 has changed over time and is going to change substantially with the Liberty Village project. It was just, if we're writing the ordinances, I just wanted to raise the question.
I, I, I think the idea of, and this is that one, the Liberty Village was completed, we only get out of the, who could it end different? Right now, it's still best to.
Yeah. And I think.
If you don't have things changing immediately.
And I think as it gets built out, you know, it's always so fun to think from a planning board perspective that we're really working on things twenty years out, right? So when you think of something like, I mean, just think of Lambertville, there is furore, it is so hard to park in that rebuild, but you find it, you can get that restaurant and you walk to, I just, let me tell you, walk to Bell's and I don't think, my God, where is this place? But, um, but again, the residents know where to park and so, um, you know, so it's.
Some of those blocks, some of you find, lacking your heartache.
And but, but again, and and so this, again, the other side of this is, so there was a fire several years ago of the property in the corner of Church and Brown, which it was rebuilt as a house, right? It wasn't rebuilt as a business, like the property owner.
And did a beautiful job.
It's gorgeous, it's wonderful and love seeing it, right? It's just that they just, they chose residential because, you know, their economic decision was to, to make it residential, it was perfectly fine.
All right, so any other questions or discussion on the D B two then? I'm thinking especially now. And I'm also looking at the time. Continuing through, power through for the, and then a few minutes, I'll have a break, but I'd rather power through and. So, you have anything to add right now? I'm only asking you because you're not me too. Dennis or, um?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you're, I, it's hard to hear. Uh, I'm good, I'm good.
I'm good, I'm good.
I'm good.
Everybody good? Mike, Melissa, and I'm gonna just.
Kind of put her thumb up, she's good.
You're good, thank you. All right. So, I guess this goes back to the subcommittee to take it further.
What we've heard, what we've heard.
I think we should have, uh, try to get a meeting going. I'll, I'll send an email to everybody.
Yeah.
And we'll get a meeting going quickly and, when's our next? Let me ask this.
Land meeting, third week.
So in terms of, um, next steps, it seems obvious that the subcommittee's gonna talk about this, we're gonna talk to the zoning. So in terms of, um, next steps, it seems obvious that the subcommittee's gonna talk about this, we're gonna talk to the zoning officer and revise the ordinance. And so, what I'd like to understand is, is, should the ordinance come back here for the meeting in, uh, the next meeting, uh, for the discussion by the planning board? Or do you folks want to move it on? I, I just need some.
If we moved it on, it would, the board would see, we would let the board see it, and they could comment to you privately before it went on, or.
I think, I think all options.
The question is, do we need a whole, another whole meeting, or can we do it back, we did the amendments.
If you made, made the changes, subcommittee meets, um, with the zoning officer, with Robin, has the ordinance ready, brings it back to the planning board, see if anybody else has additional comments or additional changes, and if not, then they could make recommendations for it onto the council. And then you can bring it to the council and you walk them through it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's getting a little bit more harder to hear, you guys, as you guys are getting a little bit further away from the mics.
Sorry, Ellie, um, we're just discussing which way to go forward with it.
Yeah, well, I, that's like the important stuff that, for.
I'm sorry, my, my suggestion was that it goes back to the subcommittee, you get tweaked and looked at, and then we have a separate meeting with, uh, with our, our zoning officer, with Robin, and then if everything's cohesive, we bring it back to the planning board as, in the form of an ordinance. Uh, Beth, which already changes, it has been made, sees that there's nothing else, everybody's good with it, then, then they would support it to go to the council, at which point Beth would go to the council meeting and walk everybody through it, see if they have any changes. If they have changes, it goes back to the subcommittee, if they don't, then they introduce it at the next, I don't mean, there's the night or the next meeting. I think we have a meeting on the nineteenth, and we have a meeting on the twenty-sixth, for the downhill.
Planning board is nineteenth and twenty-sixth.
That's not crazy, I'm like.
No, no, that's.
Is there a council meeting by any chance in the twenty-fifth?
No, there is a council, no, uh, yes, there is, I'm sorry.
Right?
Yeah.
We've moved, we've moved it because there was Election Day and Veterans Day.
Let me just check, because that's, I know.
Council's the day.
So let me just check when, when it is, um.
Council, I think there's a meeting on the twelfth.
The council meeting, the council's on the twelfth, and the council's on the twenty-fifth.
And we could, we could talk about it at the nineteenth, and it could go to councils early to the twenty-fifth, if everything goes well.
Correct, that's what I'm thinking, so, there, I can't, unless something unforeseen happens, I can't think of any reason why this ordinance can't come back for a planning board on the fifteenth.
The council only has one meeting currently scheduled in December, which is the ninth, and, you know, if, unless there was something extreme, I am loathe to shove things down the residents' throats right before the holidays, it's not my style, and I hate to start all over again next year. But, if we can get it, the council was able to introduce this on either, you know, on the, on the twenty.
Yeah, you can't introduce it, Mayor, in one year and, and adopt it in the next, yeah, so, that's what we gotta make sure of.
Do a special meeting that makes it look like, you know, we're trying to get something done on the slide, it's not my style.
But when it comes back here on the nineteenth, it shouldn't, it won't leave this, it shouldn't leave this level of discretion.
I don't think it will.
Because I encourage board members who, if you think of something in the next day, so that pops into your head after the discussion, we can chat about it all the subcommittee, and we can.
But I think the challenge for the, for the council's schedule is, if you introduce it on the twenty-fifth, there's no planning board meeting between then.
Yeah, there is, there's, there's a meeting on the twenty-sixth of a planning board.
Next one.
Yes.
The next one.
Sorry, I'll take that.
So, so there, so we, yeah, it could work that if, that if we saw it on the nineteenth, council did first reading on the twenty-fifth, we did our consistency hearing on the twenty-sixth, council's meeting on the ninth could be the second reading public hearing for this. Otherwise, it's going into twenty, twenty-five, like, that, that's, I think those are the options.
Yeah. Right, and I would just, um, remind, um, the board that, that for the nineteenth, it looks like we have the resolution for the one-ten Main Street, we have the public hearing for the historic district element of the master plan, a consistency review for the ordinance for the amended historic district map, we have the public hearing for national pools and spas, and possibly the public hearing for the Liberty Village. Um, so that's a, a fairly heavy, um, uh, meeting schedule for the nineteenth, and some of those things may and probably will continue to the twenty-sixth.
I didn't think, I felt Liberty Village wasn't coming till the sixth, twenty-sixth.
Well, they, they submitted all of their completeness items, they sent it to Bob Clerico, he did request, so I'm, I'm, you know.
Right, well, we'll.
That's still, I mean, agenda is, is up to council, we would need to, um, if, if, you know, get some kind of feedback from Bob Clerico on that. We need to discuss that, to schedule, because they are looking to, um, for the nineteenth, and we need to give them an answer.
And Beth, I don't know if you would wanna have some conversations with some of the members of council ahead of time. Um, it's the week of the league, you know, the nineteenth, twenty, twenty-first, and half of the council is gonna be in the land city, and the other half's here. So you got half of them, you can't have a core anyway, if you did wanna reach out and see, you know, walk them through it a little bit and see if they have questions, um.
Let's, let's, let's aim for it, because it's coming towards the nineteenth first anyway, so let's aim, see what we can get done before then, and if it looks like there's too much, or if we, you know, if it looks like it's ready to go, we can aim for it, right?
I mean, really, it falls to council's schedule at that point.
It does, we'll have done that, and then it, it's feasible, because it depends what they want to with it. So, council, we can aim for the.
Yeah, we have a show this time, too, but it's around, that means nothing.
And I encourage the board that it, I'm not, I'm not prohibiting discussion, but the large part of our discussion should have been tonight, so if you think of things in the meantime, raise them up so that we can.
I just, I think Hannah might have a question.
I just had a cook, Mayor, I'm sorry, did you, I just wanted to make sure, did we say we were gonna try and include, uh, Robin in the conversation as well with you guys in the subcommittee at all?
Yes.
Okay, great, that's just what I wanted to confirm, because I just wanted to make sure her voice was heard too, thank you.
Absolutely.
Right, so let's see, you heard it several times, thank you.
So, all right, so I've got back here for discussion on the nineteen, assuming all goes well, between now and the nineteenth, working with the subcommittee, the zoning officer and Robin. Ordinance draft on the nineteenth, introduction the twenty-fifth, back here for master plan referral on the twenty-sixth of November, public hearing, potential adoption, December ninth.
That is the only schedule that gets this on this year.
It is, and, and the problem is, is introducing it on the twenty-fifth and explaining it to the council on the same night.
Right, right, so, ma'am, I have a question, I need to, the, the council requested that we do this, right?
The council, the council requested it, and there has been, uh, the council requested it last year, council requested it this year, there's been some back and forth about, some, from some of the members, uh, vacillating on it this year, um, so I'm not really sure what's gonna happen, honestly.
Well, we're just, we're just doing what we were asked to do, and we'll see what we can achieve, and.
Well, like I said, this is what I was asked to do by the residents of the borough, so.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's in, in, been on our master plan, I mean, this has been a long time coming, a long time coming.
Well, I wanna thank everyone for their discussion and all the points.
I think this is one of the best discussions I have ever sat through in a plane.
Very, very open and some really good points raised, thank you very much, everybody. All right, so I'm gonna move on to chair items, and given the hour, I don't have any chair items. Discuss what was coming up in the next two meetings, do we have an executive session, car item nine?
We do not.
Excellent, good to hear, so I'd like a motion.
Move to a turn.
Well, I think we heard that, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.